Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council's study session for Thursday, September 29th. All of our council is present with the exception of Mr. Luna, who's unable to attend this morning and is excused. The first item on our agenda is to review the agenda for our Monday, October 3rd meeting. So council, please take a look at that document. Mr. Brady, I know we've got some interesting topics on air.
Six, six, eight. We have those presentations in the study session, so items. So we'll come back to those.
Fireworks and noise.
And short-term rentals.
Short-term rentals are all, those are the subject of hearings at our next council meeting after this, on October 17th, and we'll have presentations on those today.
Yeah, we have those.
Okay, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like a little information on 4H, it's the virtual police officer recruit training. Is this the first year the police department's done that? Do we know that?
I think we know that. Here they come.
Thank you, Commander.
Good morning.
Lieutenant.
Good morning.
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
I know Fire's done this, so I don't know if this is the first year, the first time that PD's done that.
Yes, and again, good morning, Mayor, council. Councilmember Freeman, Dominic Strawn, commander for Human Resources for the Police Department. This is the first year that we are going to work on this project, this National Testing Network, Fire is currently using it, and there are seven other agencies in Arizona that currently use this testing process.
Okay. What do you think the applicant base will be? Is it all nationwide? Is that the purpose of it, so we can get more recruits maybe coming to Arizona?
That's correct. We want to cast a wider net in terms of catching, getting more of an applicant base. So this particular process will go nationwide. You can do the process in-home, virtually, or you could also do it from brick-and-mortar.
Like a testing center or something like that?
Correct.
Versus previously, or before this, they would physically have to come?
That is correct.
Do that here. So not only does it, I guess, broaden the scope, but it's the convenience, right, of not having to physically be here.
That's correct, city manager. So we look at this in terms of just, again, having a broader base of applicants. We haven't had a whole lot of success in terms of getting folks into the door for the physical testing that we've done in the past. We just want to get into 2022, make it more convenient for applicants, and give a better opportunity, more flexibility for people to take that test.
Okay. So the past application process, have you had good response from it, or has it dropped by a percentage in the applicant and then into the academy?
It's been low. It's been consistently low. And then what we've seen is there, we have a certain amount that apply, and then we have about half that actually show up to the test. And so what we've done with our recruiting team, with our hiring, excuse me, is we followed up with those folks that haven't shown up, and it sounds like the convenience factor is what they would prefer. So we would hope that that would increase our numbers.
So the other question I have, if you were an existing officer in another state, would you have to go through this testing process, or could you laterally transfer into Mesa PD?
The lateral process would be slightly different. We would still require them to come out and take the physical test here. The written test wouldn't be applicable.
Okay.
But, excuse me, one other benefit of this program is that if a applicant in, say, Minnesota is testing for St. Paul, they could also use the same test they did in St. Paul for Mesa. So the applicants can have a choice of up to three departments they can apply for.
Good. I find this exciting, that we can expand our base and applicant pool for officers and for our police department. So, yeah, I saw that come up, so thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmember Freeman. Any other questions?
Counsel, any other questions on this, or anything for the police? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, council.
Counsel, any other questions on Monday's agenda? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Was there any other to ask the question? Some minor thing, but I am so happy on item 5C of the grant from the Salt River Pima Indian Community. Some very good things in there. I'm especially excited, I didn't know about hydration stations, of $10,000 allocated for that. I was curious if we have made a plan for that, or those just funds that we're going to set aside and then work on it.
Yeah, Brian.
Brian Draper, City Mesa Water Resources Department. That $10,000 is earmarked for two hydration stations to be placed at two Mesa Public Schools here in Mesa. We've been working with Mesa Public Schools and trying to identify particular schools to put those into that would show the most benefit. It also includes City Mesa water bottles that we'll give out to the kids so that they can hydrate at these stations and just ensure that they're getting the proper hydration and that they're using City Mesa water to do so. They are heavy-duty hydration stations, similar to the one that you'll see outside the main library here downtown. So they are very rugged, and they can hold up to be used by all the children at the schools. Schools have not been identified yet, but we are working with administration at the Mesa Public Schools.
Wonderful. I'm glad to see the expansion of the hydration stations and having water wherever we are without having to buy a bottle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
I do have a question on that, though. Are schools the best place to put them if we're making them for public use? I'm just worried that we're inadvertently attracting people that probably shouldn't be trespassing onto school properties.
They can't get on the school.
It depends on where you're putting it, right?
Yeah.
That is a good point, and we will be locating those in ideal spots. The schools have hardened their facilities fairly well. One of the issues we've identified with some of the older schools is they still have the old fountains, the little white water troughs with the little spigots there, and they don't always work well. And so what we're encouraging is locating these in places with their staff and facilities maintenance where we can replace those, so the kids with their new bottles now can go up and hydrate and have those available to them throughout the day.
This is not intended for passing general public.
No, it's not.
Okay, I guess that was my.
Clarify, it's intended for the school kids. So they're not using water bottles.
Correct.
Or, yeah.
So are the schools partnering with us on this?
Yeah, I think that's what I was working with them on.
Funding-wise, right? It's grant dollars, but anything up and above and beyond that, are the schools?
We're hoping to utilize their facilities maintenance in locating these fountains. The plumbing will be in place. As you're aware, in years past, we've done some lead and copper testing at the schools, and some of the old fountains do have some old lead soldering in there. So we see a dual benefit in this, where we're able to put in these new fixtures, which are all copper, and they're getting good quality water, and they're able to hydrate all day long at the playgrounds in these locations.
Awesome, thank you.
I'm probably quoting this wrong, but I've actually talked to the district about these. They're putting like 60 more in this year, and they already have tons all across Mesa at all the schools. Like Mesa High, I think, has six hydration stations already. Like, this isn't like a new thing. It's not a, like, if we're doing two, they're doing 60 or whatever, right? And those schools are so locked down, you can't get on campus if you tried. So I wouldn't worry about that at all.
I do have one more question. I assume in our new public areas, new public buildings, that we're, is it automatic to install hydration stations, water refill stations? I mean, we have the post, I don't, you know, I should have paid attention if it's at the studios.
No, we have not, we have not programmed that into our new facilities. I mean, it's not at the post, it's not at the studios, it's not outside, is that what you mean, outside the building to serve the public?
Whether outside or inside.
No, we have not put those in there.
Just to encourage, and gathering places that most people carry around water bottles these days, yay, to just encourage being able to refill in public situations.
Oh, so, oh, so the actual, okay. So let's, I'm just trying to distinguish when those that are attached to the outside for anybody coming by versus having a water bottle refill. I think that's something we can, yeah, look at. I was, I thought the question was about, well, I think a hydration station, I'm thinking of a exterior refill station, yeah. That we aren't doing, certainly we can look at the water fountain devices that, yes, I think we would, we'll look, I think that's almost becoming standard now for us to have those water bottle refill options, yes.
And then at the new Southeast Library, since that is, does have that even outdoor space to have at libraries an outdoor hydration station?
We haven't had that discussion. I don't know if that's something we're going to do, and I think we need to have that conversation about what it does attract in those areas, so.
Yeah, well, it's better than raising a lot of money for plastic bottles to hand out in our society, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Counsel, other questions on Monday's agenda? All right, thank you. Let's hop into these presentations and that are on topics that will be included in Monday's agenda. Item 2A is a presentation and to provide direction on a proposed short-term rental ordinance that requires licenses and imposes regulations on short-term rentals and vacation rentals operating in Mesa. Tim and Sarah, good to have you with us.
Good morning.
Where do we get this to go? Do you know how to make that go? I can't just think of how to get this to go. There it goes. All right, we got it. Technical difficulty.
Good morning, Mayor and council. Sarah and I are here today to discuss the short-term rental ordinance that we're going to be proposing. So let's just jump right into it. What is a short-term rental? A short-term rental is defined by the Arizona Revised Statute 9500.39, and basically it's a dwelling unit that is a single or multi-residence, or any group of units in a condo, cooperative, or timeshare, that is a transient public lodging establishment or owner-occupied residential home. Transient is basically defined as anytime you rent something for less than 30 consecutive days. A lot of people call them vacation rentals. What's really driving this is a Senate bill that's passed and was signed by the governor in July of this year, and went into effect this last September 24th. On the law, basically, 9-5-39 limits how cities can regulate the short-term rentals, but does encourage us to enforce our existing codes, our zoning, nuisance, and property maintenance. It prohibits use for certain harmful purposes. It does require a license, and with that, we'll be gaining or gathering some emergency points of contact. There'll be some requirements for neighbor notifications, and it does place some insurance requirements on the owners.
And Mayor and council, on this slide, I just wanted to clarify that the statute allows us to do all of these things. We don't necessarily have to do these things, but it does set pretty specific parameters for what cities are allowed to do.
I assume you'll tell us which one of these things we're proposing to do.
Yes, that's coming up.
And maybe, maybe step back.
Sure.
Is that the legislature, I don't know how long ago, took away the ability for cities to regulate.
Right.
So now this is kind of a.
A move in the direction of giving us more.
With a limitation, these limitations, is that correct?
Yeah, the statute originally said that cities can't prohibit or regulate except as set forth herein, and then it sets forth specific things that cities can do, and the things that cities can do now have been expanded as of a few days ago.
So and as part of that, then, they do have grounds for suspension, and they do have some allowable civil penalties that we'll be discussing here coming up. Our goals with the short-term residential ordinance is to license short-term rentals, to gain compliance with city codes and applicable laws. We will be getting emergency contact information of the person responsible for responding to emergencies and complaints, and the requirement that notification to the neighbors and the area around those will also be provided by the owner or their designated person. There are some minimum liability insurance requirements that they'll have to have, prohibited uses, they will not be allowed to have any kind of housing, any sex offenders, sober-living, selling liquor, illegal drugs, obscenity, pornography, adult-oriented businesses, or special events, or retail. So there's a lot of items that they cannot do. It does put out a process for the grounds and for denial and suspension of the license, and then, like I said, there will be civil penalties proposed against the owner and others if they have any violations of this ordinance. We are estimating this about 2,000 to 3,000 short-term rentals in Mesa. Some of the information that we will be collecting on our application is the name and address, phone number, email of the owner, and the emergency contract, or the contact, I should say, address of that short-term rental. We'll be ensuring that they have their TPT license, which is their tax license, and that they'll have to sign an agreement that they are, will be, that they will be complying with all of the laws. Some of the grounds for denial, those are very much specified by the legislation that came through, so we were kind of limited on what we could have for that, but what it did provide for was if they have, if they failed to provide the application information or the fee. If the owner has a suspended license for that property, they will not be allowed to renew the license. False or misleading information, if they provide that, and the owner or designee, if they've been convicted of sex offender or convicted of a felony involving death, serious injury, or a deadly weapon in the last five years. The owner must disclose the emergency point of contact and must keep the information updated, included as part of this notification to the neighbors. They must post this information in the short-term rental as well, so the people that are occupying that do know how to get ahold of the owner if there's an issue. Emergency contact must, the emergency contact must respond to all complaints and emergencies. There's specific timeframes for that, so if public safety personnel have been dispatched, they have to respond within one hour, and in person if the public safety requests them to do so. And for all other complaints or issues, they need to respond within 24 hours, either in person, by phone, or by email. Suspensions can be up to 12 months if they're, so we'll be, we'll be setting up some guidelines on how to suspend if we have to go down that route. If they have one serious violation, basically against the owner, if that would be basically a felony offense at the vicinity of the short-term rental, if they have any kind of serious physical injury or wrongful death at the short-term rental, or if they knowingly rent to someone that is not allowed, that will be immediate grounds for suspension of their license. Also, if they have any three violations in a 12-month period, I will basically be implementing a process for the citation and the opportunity for hearings. So if they are cited by someone, we will be setting up a hearing process for them to go through.
Tim? Mr. Freeman, Mr. Thompson.
Tim, are the, is the 12-month period, is that a calendar year, or is that a rolling 12 months?
Councilmember Thompson, I want to start out by saying that all of these parameters are also specifically set by statute. So we did not come up with these reasons for suspension there in the statute, and so we're copying those over into the ordinance, and 12-month is one of the wordings in the statute, so that would be a rolling 12-month period, not a calendar year.
Okay, thank you.
And then there's a limited scenario for suspensions up to 12 months, that the courts can enact as well for any felony act that would take place in the short-term rental if it involved death or serious physical injury. Some of the proposed civil penalties that we're looking at are against, would be against the owner. We're proposing a $500 first violation, $1,000 second violation, and a $2,000 for third violation within a 12-month period. Additional penalties against the owner for not being licensed or not providing the emergency contact, we're proposing a $250 for the first month, $500 for the second, $750 for the third, and $900 for the fourth in each additional month after that.
And council, these proposed civil penalties, the statute sets forth that we can impose civil penalties on the owner, and they set forth the maximum amount of those civil penalties. So under that first bullet point that you see for an owner who violates their first, second, and third, the statute has slightly higher penalties that are allowed, but we chose to be slightly more business-friendly there, so the maximum amount for the third violation via statute is $3,500. And then if you look at the second bullet point there, the statute allows us to penalize an owner for $1,000 right off the bat for their violations for not being licensed. We decided to do more of a graduated approach up to $900.
Mr. Freeman.
So are these violations, civil penalties, are they kind of standard for all municipalities? Or are we, in the tier of municipalities, where do we rank?
So there are currently two municipalities that have already adopted ordinances since the statute went, since the new legislation went through, and those two municipalities are, they are doing the maximum penalties, but their statutes are phrased, or their ordinances are phrased as "up to." So it's not necessarily that they will do the maximum, but they allow it for "up to" the maximum. And so even though their ordinances might not have this graduated approach in it, that might be in practice what they're doing, I'm not sure. And then there are some cities where, so to answer your question, Councilmember Freeman, we're in the middle. There's some cities who don't have as high of penalties yet and haven't adopted new ordinances since the statute went into effect.
Well, you brought up a good point. Why wouldn't we do "up to" a certain amount?
Well, we wanted to have more specific and clear penalties listed, and so that everyone knows when they, if there is a violation, exactly what they will be penalized.
Well, recently, I haven't had any complaints in my district regarding short-term rentals. I don't know how the other council districts.
Frankie, you have.
You have quite a few. So, I mean, I'm on board to probably do a higher penalty, just because I think that that should be in the ordinance to, so the short-term rental unit owner knows that, hey, I could be fined this maximum amount, but.
That's certainly something we can look at, and as long as it's within the parameters of the statute.
So I guess the pros and cons of that is, it's nice to know, it, you know, this is a schedule you can look at, it's 500, 1,000, 2,000, if it's "up to," then there's some discretion involved, and that requires a hearing and someone to evaluate, and it's subjective. So I see the pros and cons there.
And since it's new, it allows for this kind of graduation or gradual.
What do you think, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, Mayor and council, you hit it, the point right on the head is that it's really beneficial to have the exact numbers, so that you have the certainty, because you don't have to go through the whole process. If someone wants to come in and just pay the fine and move on, we'll be able to do that. We don't have to have the hearing, to have the hearing officer to determine the fine. And also, even though sometimes you have, you could put a maximum "up to," many times people think that they will do well at the hearing, and they, they think it's going to be at the bottom end, so it actually results in people thinking, well, I could just get a $50 fine, so I might as well go to the hearing and find out, as opposed to, no, put a floor on, you know you're going to at least have to pay this amount. So it acts as, we think it acts as a better deterrent to actually have a specific number. But we could always, I mean, we can change it now, or we can come back and change it as we, in the future, but we actually gave this a lot of thought, to actually have a very specific number. And you'll even see, and you'll see this in a few minutes in the noise ordinances, we did allow for some flexibility, but we put a floor on the penalty, so that it's not, you know, it's not zero to 2,500, there's a floor. On this, we just decided, instead of having a floor and a top, we just have a specific number, so we don't have to have to go through the hearing process.
The hearing officer usually tends to go to the lower end, typically, anyway.
I was thinking, if I lived next to a short-term rental and these violations were happening, I would want that individual to be, you know, fined at the maximum, because I wouldn't want them, you know, I just wouldn't want to live around a short-term rental, and I don't know what judgment, you know. I haven't had any issues in my district, I know Councilmember Haredia has and others, but I see your point, but my thought is, what happens that on the fourth violation after the third, if there's a fourth?
So the previous, or maybe two previous slides, Councilmember Freeman talked about suspension, so there's, if there is, it depends in what time period the violations occurred, but if there's three violations within that 10-month period, Tim could then go suspend that license.
Okay. I'll stand. Ms. Billingsbury.
I guess I'm just curious, like, what are the complaints that we hear, or what are, what's the Mesa PD dealing with? Is it just that people are having parties or noise? Like, what are the main things that we're seeing?
Mr. Haredia?
I think what we see is the parties, parking, just like an ongoing amount every weekend, and the problem is, there's no ability to kind of enforce, you know, the industry where they rent it out, like, they try to contact, neighbors try to contact folks, they contact PD, and there's very little that can be done right now.
The contact information system.
Yeah, they're usually, you know, some of these are investor homes that, you know, are just being rented out continuously, and there's no ability to reach whoever owns that property, and so I think this is an opportunity for us to at least have some, some rules, right, to some guidelines. I, to talk to, about Mr. Freeman's comment, I think I'm fine with this. I think it helps probably staff to kind of be descriptive initially to the fines and kind of have an orderly process for that at the beginning, and then as we learn, I think, could we, could we apply, even increase fines if we're noticing that there's a large issue?
Sure, we can come back.
We can come back, right. In addition, how do, how do folks know that we will require a license? Are we working with industry, like the Airbnbs, or Verbo's, and others, to notify whoever lists a short-term rental on their site, that they need to be licensed, or like, what's the process that folks that, you know, you're saying 2,000 to 3,000 short-term rentals in Mesa, how do those 2,000 to 3,000 know that we're, we're implementing a license and they should have a license?
Sure. Mayor and councilmember Haredia, we'll be doing an extensive outreach to that, we'll be doing social media, probably getting the news outlets involved, and just doing a bunch of things on our website and stuff as well to get the word out, so, and hopefully using any kind of resources that we've got, so we get those, that information out.
And councilmember Haredia, we are proposing an effective date of this ordinance, of February 1st. So presumably, if this is adopted by council, October 17th, there's multiple months for that outreach to take place.
Is there, is there any discussion on how do you work with industry on identifying these? Because, you know, as, if you go on one of these sites, there's tons of Mesa short-term rentals. Is that a possibility to work with them, to notify them, that whoever has a Mesa address that you're renting from this site, that there's, there's a license now that you have to receive? Like, how do, how do we, how do we coordinate that, or can we coordinate with the folks that are listing these sites?
Councilmember Haredia, we will definitely do everything we can to notify the ones that we're aware of. We've only got about 200 of them that are actually licensed through the city, and the rest are all going through the big Airbnb.
Sure.
And so we'll be contacting them. That'll be the wide net right there, so once we reach the major operators. You'd be amazed how many phone calls we're already getting in our office, and they already want to sign up for the license because they've already heard about it. I'm getting calls every single day already, and I understand there's far more outreach that's needed, but the word's getting out already, especially since a few of the cities, or a couple of the cities have already adopted, and many of the people that own these have already heard that the state has got the legislation out there, and that's gone into effect already. So the calls that we're getting, since it went into effect September 24th, already, I need to get licensed, I don't want to be penalized, so, and we're not even there yet. We tell them that, you know, we're going to council now, and we'll be, you know, we won't be implementing until February if council approves this, so.
Good morning, Mayor, councilmembers.
It's also, the Verbo's and the Airbnbs want to be successful, so as soon as we notify them that Mesa has a requirement, they're going to be pushing that down to the businesses that are working through them.
And what's the process for them to, is it similar to getting another license through the city? Is it like a form online, or what's the process for folks?
Yes, it'll be an online process again as well, so we'll be going through the same licensing application, just basically a limited application, just gathering that information that we've got on here, and then they can do everything online if they want, so they can go online, pay for it, and everything like that, and then we'll just email or send the license out.
Ms. Billingsbury.
Frankie, you answered my question, then asked three more questions, so. I just, back to like the violations that we are seeing, so having them licensed and providing, posting that emergency contact does make a big difference, then, of following up on those violations. up on those violations.
Yes, Councilmember Spillsbury, that's a very important tool of this, is that we will have an emergency contact on all of these licensed short-term rentals, and especially because when public safety personnel is dispatched to the site, they're required by our ordinance, and also, we're allowed to do this by statute, to respond in person. So presumably, that means that the person who is listed as their emergency point of contact has to be a local contact.
A local contact. And so if an owner has a violation, we probably won't know that they're not licensed, or that they don't have their emergency contact posted, unless there's another violation that police gets called out to, or something, correct?
Yes, that's, it's possible.
So they would get that, like, $500 first violation, and then the 250, most likely, and then the next month, they would get 500 added on, like that? Is that...
Yes, so those two bullet points there are in addition to each other. So they could have the penalty for not being licensed for the first month, which is that 250, or a different sort of violation under this ordinance, which would be the 500.
Okay. And then are there, do HOAs have, are, like, do they already have rules with short-term rentals that conflict with this, or that are more strict than this, or...
Councilmember Spillsbury, so this would not affect what HOAs are allowed to do. HOAs may have stricter rules, they may prohibit short-term rentals in their communities, and this wouldn't touch on that. So HOAs would still be able to have their...
So there's trumps, anything that the city would do?
If they have it.
And we know some have put those in place, but to say that all HOAs have that, that wouldn't be accurate.
I wish Councilmember Luna was here, because the ones I hear of the most are the ones in Los Angeles, and so I would be curious to get the take on that. But, and then my other question was just, what are we currently doing right now? Like, what do we currently have on the books for short-term rentals? Do we have anything?
We do not currently have any specific ordinance as to short-term rentals, we would just be enforcing our current nuisance code, noise ordinance, just like with any other sort of property.
Okay, and so they, as of now, up until now, have never had to do any kind of a business license for their short-term rental?
So they would be required to do the business license that was adopted maybe a year ago? This would be, this would be separate, yes.
Okay, so they should have already have done a business license, maybe?
Presumably.
Presumably. And so then, now, this is a separate license for specifically a short-term rental, so everything we're proposing today is new for these short-term rentals?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, going back to the, what, earlier, is this the first time since the legislature, essentially, I don't know what the word is, prohibited cities from imposing these kinds of oversight? So now they've loosened that up, so that, this is, we are following up quickly from what the legislation's just allowed, that they're only doing what they've allowed us to do. Go ahead, Miranda.
Thank you, Chris. Mayor and Council, good morning. Just to reiterate what Mr. Brady was stating, yes, back in 2016, the state legislature preempted all authority for cities and towns to restrict or regulate short-term rentals. Since then, there's been efforts to retain some of that authority, and there has been some legislation to require registrations, and, and other efforts to try to combat the party houses. But what we saw this session, that is now in effect, is the most significant piece of legislation we've seen, to help address the issues related to short-term rentals.
And so I guess I just still maybe don't have a great answer. Do we get, like, a ton of these calls? Are we getting two a week? Are we, like, how, how much of a problem is this in the city of Mesa?
It's enough that, I wouldn't say that we're getting complaints in all 2,000.
Right.
But it's, it's usually, it only takes a couple in a neighborhood that it becomes a problem, and maybe Council Haredia can speak to that, and I know Councilwoman Luna's had that challenge too, maybe. But we do see that as, at least what I've heard, is more of a chronic, you know, you have the party house, right, and the, and the neighbors are frustrated, because they, there's nobody to even contact, they don't, there's not anybody to go and try to address that. And it's a tool now for the police department, so when they get the calls, now they have a contact, a local contact.
Okay, because they, like, I mean, we've, we've rented short-term rentals before, so usually you sign something that says you're not going to do X, Y, and Z. So then, is the person held responsible for anything, or is, are we just going after the owners?
Councilmember Spillsbury, this ordinance is mostly directed towards the owners. If there are violations of this ordinance, or such as the noise ordinance, that you'll hear about right after this presentation, we also enforce against that specific person, such as a guest of the short-term rental. But for this ordinance, the more harsh penalties, and the goal of it is really against the owners.
Because I, and an owner can tell their guests that they can't have, you know, guests over, or they can't have noise after 10, or whatever, and then people don't follow that, and so I guess that they just have to deal with that on their own, because the owners are going to be the ones that get the violation. Okay.
Okay, this, well, I'm sorry, let me ask my question there. You mentioned earlier that this ordinance requires that the police respond to a complaint?
No, sorry, Mayor, that, if I said that, that was a misstatement. So if the police, or any emergency personnel, were to respond to a complaint, it would require the emergency point of contact listed on the license to also respond in person.
Okay. So if, I get, I mean, there's a, there's a line that, just, just in it, rent, suspecting that your neighbor is leasing their house out for short-term rental, should not provoke some sort of call to the city of Mesa, saying, I want to find out if my, my neighbor's in compliance with the short-term rental ordinance.
But it could.
It will, yeah.
Okay, so I guess, that's my question.
Sure.
If I, if I think they're doing it, and I just want to, I'm a Karen, and I just want to make sure they got all their paperwork, then I can call the city and say, I want you to go to 238 West Second Street.
We just look it up.
Right, we'll just look it up.
All right, so, but to, to be subject to the consequences of this ordinance, the, the short-term rental, well, that would be a violation. And then what are the consequences of just failing to register? I think that was on a slide you showed us earlier. Okay, great. So if there's a, some sort of disturbance, either a violation of the noise ordinance, or something else, that then would require a citation from the police department, and that would provoke these other penalties?
Yes, so there wouldn't necessarily have to be a citation from the police department, but if it is of the noise ordinance, or something that the police department normally deals with, then yes, because under this short-term rental ordinance, a, they are required to comply with both the Macezonian ordinance, and the noise ordinance, our nuisance code, all of our other codes, essentially. So if there is a violation of one of those other codes, it would be a violation of this ordinance as well.
So hypothetically, an officer could respond to a noise complaint, goes out there, they comply, they turn it down, but in, along the way, we just, we realize, after looking up the data, this is not a licensed short-term rental, then we would still be able to enforce that part of it.
So that would be a referral to code compliance?
Or just to complain to us, and we're looking into it.
Licensing would enforce that, yeah.
Tim, you mentioned, we already have 200 that are registered?
Yes.
Is that just people proactively saying, oh, I, I saw in the news that there's, that I need to comply, and so I'm going to call Kim, and...
Let me clarify that, yeah, we've, we have 200 people that have got tax licenses already, so we know that they are registered that way through the tax license. And I would say registered, maybe is not the right word. We know that there's 200 out there, because we have 200 tax licenses out there already. So, and, but we're estimating about 2,000 to 3,000, that's how many people are going through the bigger companies, and just don't, maybe don't have tax licenses, or whatever, and this will be another way to make sure that we're, making, that they've got the proper licensing.
So Airbnb, and whatever other apps are out there, we're, they're already proactively sending us the sales tax that they're supposed to send us, and so that's how we know there's 2,000 of them already in the city?
We're just guessing at that. We don't know, they don't have to disclose that information to us, we just know that they're sending us, and they might just be sending, I can't, I can't really speak to how that's coming in.
But we can just go online, and we can just look at the listings.
Right.
For our own, like, these are the TPT license folks that have identified themselves as landlords, or is there a box that they check for short-term landlords?
So they file tax for a specific tax code that identifies them as short-term rental. So the Airbnb, the VRBO, they register themselves as a taxpayer, so all of those that are renting through that service come into us through those two taxpayers, as opposed to all the individual properties that they're accommodating. So we know the ones that are renting directly, those are the ones that we're talking about that have their own TPT license, and identify through the tax code what they're paying it for, but then we have an unknown number in each of those large corporations that run these businesses.
And I, we suspect, I would guess, that most of the people that are doing short-term rentals are doing it through a booking agent, right?
Correct.
It would be difficult to somehow advertise, you know, your own, your property to strangers.
Well, if you had a friend or someone that had one that rented it to you, that happens a lot.
So on a casual basis, informal basis, you could, you know, a friend of a friend looking for a place to stay, and that's going to happen, and those folks might be difficult to enforce against, unless there's a party house going on, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we interrupted you when you were still giving your presentation, and, okay, please proceed.
Okay. The task that we have left to do yet is give public notice, once the council agrees to the fees that we're looking at charging. We need to assess the staffing need, we will need to add some staff to handle this, and then we need to obviously make our modifications to our tax and licensing system to allow for another license.
And Council, I'm not sure if we said this already, but the license fee for this is, would be $250, and that is also set by the statute.
For, and how long does a license go?
One year.
Okay.
So it's renewable every year?
Yes.
$250?
Correct.
Vice Mayor.
So going back to the citations, there really isn't anything that you would cite for, other than not being registered, emergency contact information, that isn't already against ordinance, right? I mean, you're doing a background check, that is a possibility, at the time of licensing, right? As far as if they're a felon, or something like that, right? We're doing background check, but I'm just trying to figure out, on the citations, how does that occur? It would really be against our ordinances that are already in effect, right? You can't sell drugs out of your house, whether it's a rental or not, right? There's all these...
So Vice Mayor, there are those types of violations of this ordinance, but there's also the other requirements that they would have to meet under this ordinance, such as providing notification to the neighbors, making sure that the emergency point of contact is updated and listed inside of the residence, so any sort of violations of those sections of the ordinance could also be cited.
Okay, so somehow we find out, maybe a neighbor says, or whatever, then we send a letter, or, I mean, are we actually issuing a citation from law enforcement, or we're just sending a letter of notification?
So the violations of this ordinance wouldn't be cited by law enforcement, that would come from Tim's group.
Okay.
And obviously, if the police department do cite, then we have that as well, so I mean, that's, that's dispatched because of a noise complaint, or something like that, and then we would be notified of that.
So the only citation we would, are more administrative, that would violate, all the others are kind of covered through our ordinances anyway, as far as noise, and illicit activities, whatever. Okay, all right. Now, when you register for the license, please tell me it won't be through Dimes, and we have another process?
It won't be through Dimes, but it'd be, I would be telling you the incorrect information. It is through Dimes. You said to tell you that.
It's our whole system, it's our whole system, so.
Yeah, it's our, that is our licensing system.
Yeah, it's not the friendliest of systems. I keep on thinking, for our business licenses, and for this registration, we have something a little easier, and friendlier to use, and hopefully, we can get that interface. Maybe when someone registers their short-term rental, could they check a box and say, and I also want to register this as a business, or have something like that, so you wouldn't have to go through that system twice?
We can take a look at that, but...
Okay, it doesn't fit in the system, it doesn't fit the boxes. Okay. And I assume short-term rentals also apply to anybody who's renting a room out of their house, whether they reside there or not, so...
And remember, this only applies to if you have something of 30 days, or, I'm sorry, less than 30 consecutive days. So if you're renting something out of your house, and you've got a lease, then that would not affect that, so, it's only if you're having somebody, or you're renting to someone that's less than 30 consecutive days, then this kicks in.
Airbnb and the other short-term, they have that filter, where am I looking to rent a room, or a space on my own, so it's very common to have a short-term rental as a room.
Yes, Vice Mayor, so the definition is broad enough to cover if you're just renting a portion of a home?
Okay, and whether it's owner occupied or not, doesn't matter, we just have one uniform, short-term rental license and ordinances. Okay, great. I have another note here, but I understand it, I might ask later. Okay, thank you.
Aren't they done?
I don't think we finished.
We're almost done.
Oh, sorry.
So anyway, yes, the key dates that we have left, obviously, I just want to go through that, that's that we will be introducing it on the 3rd of October, sub for consideration on the 17th. We'll be looking at consideration of fees on the 5th, and then we're proposing a February 1st actual license effective date. And with that, we're done.
Ms. Spillsbury.
I'm just curious, I recently stayed at a short-term rental, vacation rental, in St. George, that was part of a rental neighborhood. The whole entire neighborhood was just vacation rentals, and it was great, because then there would be no neighbors that had any problem, because every single person was renting out. Have we seen interest in that in Mesa, or in the Valley, or have you guys heard of it?
I, I've not been aware of that.
Councilmember Spillsbury, I, I've heard of this idea, I don't know if it's happening in Mesa, but there, this, the statute wouldn't allow us to prohibit that, or to prohibit any sort of, because you have a lot of properties together, that you can use them as short-term rentals.
And so just the owner of all of those houses, would they have to get a different license for each house?
Yes, each rental property would have to be licensed.
Okay, so if you have 10 houses in Mesa, you would have to get one for all 10 houses?
Yes.
Okay, so if you, if there was one of those neighborhoods that popped up, it would just be similar to all of the other things, okay.
Mr. Freeman.
So to answer your question, Councilmember Spillsbury, I was speaking with a zoning attorney, there's a developer who wants to build about 26 vacation rental homes, and VRB homes in my district. So that is coming, potentially? But my other question is, I didn't hear the distance required for the notification process, and, and who verifies it? Who's responsible for it? Who verifies it, that it was done? Did I miss that?
No, that is a great question, Councilmember Freeman. So the notification to the neighbors, per statute, is, we can require them to notify any properties adjacent to the short-term rental, directly across the street from the short-term rental, or diagonally across the street from the short-term rental. That is the phrasing the statute uses. Because that could be somewhat complicated to figure out what exactly diagonally and directly across the street from could mean, we thought of a reasonable distance, that you could also comply with that notification, which is within 200 feet of the property of the short-term rental. So that would be another way to meet that requirement, is to provide notice to everyone within 200 feet. And if it's a multiple residence unit, you have to provide notice to all of the units on the same floor of the same building as the short-term rental.
Okay. Sounds good, I just wondered if there was a distance, like, some feet involved?
200 feet for the single residents would meet the requirements.
And that meets the intent of the statute?
Yes.
Okay. And then I was going to ask a question about a full-time employee to manage this, this sounds like it can be pretty busy for your office.
Yes, it will be, we'll, we'll need additional staff with this.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
I'm glad the legislature is putting some power back into the cities to manage these, because it has been an issue in District 6. I mean, we had a, I had a person send me a video from, from a party house that was across the street from his, where it was a motorcycle gang showed up, there was like 12 Harleys parked in the driveway, the garage door went up, the keg came out, the stereo came on, and they literally were partying in the front yard, and in the garage. And so, you know, we have to, we have to have some control over things like that, just for the, for the peace and serenity of our neighborhoods. So I'm glad that, that the legislature's given us some of that opportunity to regulate and manage those properly. So I'm on board, I love it. I'm kind of like Councilmember Freeman, I wish the penalties were a little stiffer, because people are making a mint off of these rentals. And, you know, $500 for somebody misbehaving is a drop in the bucket, because that's basically like, not even one night of rental, you know, because they're usually charging, you know, $1,000 or more. I mean, it's a mortgage payment, basically what they're making off of these per night. So, you know, if you wanted to increase the penalty, I would be 100% okay with that. Thank you.
Frankie.
On the notification...
On the notification, do they have to provide a letter or postcard of the copy that they notify, do they have to mail? Is it, how descriptive are we saying you need to notify, is it just a doorknob or...
Councilmember Heredia, so the notification has to be in writing, the owner has to notify in writing to all those neighbors that fall within that distance. And then as far as showing the city that it met those requirements, that would be on, upon the request of Tim, they would have to show that they met those requirements.
How's that, Tim? Is it a letter? Like, I know plenty, when there's a new development, they have to send a letter to, and then we get a copy of that letter that they sent.
Right. We chose not to do that. Basically, we left it open so that if I, if we get complaints, then I'm going to request that from them, and they're going to have to provide that to me within the timeframe, within the ordinance. So just try to cut down the paperwork coming in and the work that we're going to have to do, they have to have it and it's, it's demandable upon request. So then we'll make sure that way, so it'll be basically be by complaint. One of the nice things about this ordinance as well is that they need to list their, they need to post their license first, and then they also need to have their license number on any communication that they're using as well. So people are going to know the license number, they're going to know how to get a hold of us. There will be people calling our office and making sure people are properly licensed and so forth, I'm fully expecting that, so. Especially, I'm sure the people that are tired of the ones that are not operating, there's so many that operate well.
Sure.
So, but the ones that operate, are not operating, they're going to be on our office, wanting to know that every single step that they're following, to make sure that they're following all the rules, and if not, they want us, they're going to want us to do something about it.
And I assume when, when it comes to renewal, do we check police database or information if they got, if they receive noise complaints and make a case for denial for when they renew? Or, or is there a process of, just a data collection of, you know, these problematic homes or rentals? How do you, how do you, how do you work with the systems that we have here to make sure that these are, because the problem I mentioned earlier, there's, there's very little like neighbors can do right now to really enforce, you know, and us as a city to enforce this. So how do, how do we make a case for these problematic ones that can be denied in the future, right, so?
Councilmember Heredia, the statute does set forth the very specific reasons that we can deny a renewal or an issuance of a license, and we can only deny for those reasons. So if the application is incomplete, they didn't pay the fees, or if at the time of applying, they have a suspended license, we could deny for that reason as well. Or if, within the prior five years, they're convicted of one of those more serious crimes. So that we're limited on what we can deny, but we would of course have records of any sort of citations or violations kept of that short-term rental.
Vice Mayor.
I remember the other question. It's around density. Didn't we pass something previously, I know Councilmember Luna was having a problem with a home that was running out rooms and they had subdivided the house on like seven or eight bedrooms and there was just so too much activity and concentration that it's very disruptive to the neighborhood. I assume that's in the short-term rentals or, or, didn't, didn't we cover that before? Or maybe we just talked about it?
But probably the zoning, or, but I don't know, I don't recall.
Okay, so...
Yeah, with that, like in the group home setting, you can only have so many occupants of a dwelling, right? That, that's something we regulate.
So we're not regulating anything on density, because we've heard and seen homes that sometimes divide like an optimal number of bedrooms and they ran out rooms on short-term rentals and then its impact. So I guess we will address that if it becomes an issue.
Vice Mayor Duff, the statute doesn't allow for us to regulate how many guests could be in the short-term rental or things like that, but possibly violations of building code or other codes if they're subdividing the house to such an extent that it doesn't comply.
Okay, all right, thanks.
I mean, I, I know I've talked with, like, short-term rentals across the street from Disneyland. I mean, there, there's been neighborhoods that just came in and were overwhelmed by this and literally there were just bunk beds, you know, in every room. And so I think the number of occupants could be an issue that we want to regulate, but it seems like that would already be covered by, or, or in a single-family home, do we put any limitation on? Okay, I'm seeing Rachel shake her head, no.
But Mayor and Council, there's building codes, fire codes, there's other regulations that would still be enforceable against these homes for occupancy and subdividing and making sure they're safe.
Okay, so there'd be safe, I'm sorry, can you say that again?
So it's not specific to the short-term rental ordinance, but just like we enforce our fire code or our building code against any other home, they would have to be up to those standards.
And, and, but I'm not sure we have those other standards, right? If we, if we don't have occupancy limits on regular dwellings that aren't regulated by special use permits or group homes or things like that?
Yeah, I think we'd have to come back and look at other codes, not related, not the short-term rental, to have that discussion. I think, that always gets into the question, you know, if they're all family members, you know?
Right, and I know we can't discriminate against large families, right?
Yeah, so, I, I don't know where that shows up.
Okay, well, I guess we'll, we'll let future councils worry about that when we have a Disneyland in Mesa with bunk beds across the street. Okay, any other, other questions, Council? So this, this is set for provide direction, but I guess the direction is on our agenda for Monday, right?
Yeah, it's on the agenda for Monday, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. I know you put a lot of work into this, we appreciate it.
If I can add just one more thing too, because I kind of joked a little bit with Vice Mayor Duff, but we've made a lot of adjustments to the licensing process. I really think we put a lot of time and effort into that, and I hope that everybody's looking at that and seeing that it's night and day between where we were months ago to where we are today.
We've actually had the chamber look at it.
Yes.
We've got businesses that are giving us feedback, so we have been making adjustments.
Yep, and you're very welcome. And we've been asking people just, you know, randomly, just to please go through it and try it and give us your honest opinion, and anything we can fix, we fixed. We've made a lot of changes.
I appreciate it.
Good deal, thanks.
All right, thank you. Next, item 2B is a presentation and to provide direction on proposed amendments to the city's noise ordinance.
Assistant Chief Ed Wessing with PD, and I have with me our staff attorney Jeff Baylen. As a result of the discussion that went on over months with the short-term rental ordinance, naturally we kind of moved into the noise ordinance, which is generally the, the ordinance that my officers deal with routinely throughout the year. We understand it's important to you, it's important to the community, and so that discussion moved into some minor revisions to the overall ordinance, which makes it, I think, easily, or more easily understood by not only the community, but by my officers and then code compliance, and in some cases even animal control, when we're asking them to enforce this, this policy. So we had about a 12-page PowerPoint for you, but since the last one was so long, we just moved it to one, in the interest of time, so...
That says nothing.
Yeah. That was my poor attempt at humor this morning. But really, this revision is just to clarify definitions, prohibitions, and the temporary exemption, exemption procedures create factors to consider for violations, which makes this code more similar to our neighboring communities. Did that pop up?
All this for one slide.
There we go. Sorry about that. And update our fines with a minimum fine, which allows some flexibility for the hearing officer or judge when they're hearing these cases, and also add some language for repeat or habitual offenders. So with that, since it's not a new ordinance, I didn't want to go over everyone in detail, allow the council, mayor to ask questions either operationally or specific to the ordinance.
So your presentation is about amendments to the existing ordinance?
That is correct.
Okay. So what are those amendments?
Yeah, see, that's, I was going to say, I would like to see specifics, maybe not 12 slides worth, but this, this slide does nothing for me, right? So I just, I would love to see some specifics.
Sure, so, some, some specifics of the ordinance are that we're adding factors similar to Gilbert and Tempe that are variables, like these cases are not one-size-fits-all. There's a, you know, someone playing their radio at 1:00 PM is a lot different than 1:00 AM. The closeness and vicinity of other people, what type of property is it was zoned for, the, what type of sound it is, I mean, there's a number of factors, and that's what we've listed in the city code now, that would go into, that would be a factor for the officers to consider and for the hearing officer or judge to consider, determine ultimately what's reasonable. And that's, that's what we're trying to get to. And, and so, like I said, not everything is, is going to be the exact same in every scenario, so you have to take the totality of circumstances and ultimately make a decision, yes, this is reasonable. So that's one of the, the biggest changes, I would say, is making it more easily applicable. And, and like Chief Wessing said, given the fact that we just changed or are likely going to be implementing a, a short-term rental ordinance, you know, we wanted to make sure that we have something that when we code to those loud parties, that we have something that's going to hold up in court and be easily understood, more easily understood by the public. Some of the other changes, I'll, I'll say they were clarifying changes, there are things that were already within the code, but were changed either structurally or dramatically to make it more concise and more easily understood. A lot of it doesn't have a huge substantive change, but from, from a code and legal perspective, it makes it more applicable. The other things that we changed were, when it comes to the general exemptions, we added a landscaping exemption for, you know, typically every year, the city had been granting an exemption for golf courses, to begin cutting at an earlier time than 6:00 AM, like 5:00 AM. And so basically inputting that general exemption into the city code so that the temporary exemption would not have to be issued every single year. One of the other changes is just making sure that if somebody applies for a temporary exemption, they know exactly how they are to apply, who they should send that to, who approves it, and where it's kept on file. So we wanted to make sure that process was spelled out, again, providing more clarification, if anything, but we felt that that was important to shore up. And then the lastly, it was really the penalties. Before, we had the, I would say, probably the lowest penalty in the state, $75, I believe it was, for the first offense. And then it went incrementally up from there, but it didn't, it didn't rise to a great level. This time, with the, with the new changes, it would start at 250, no less than 250 and go up to 1,500 for a first offense. Second offense would be no less than 500, up to 2,500. Third offense, $750, up to $250, 200, 2,500, sorry. And so it, it provides, and that's again, you know, I, I know we just heard about the discussion on penalties, but especially with noise, I mean, there's varying degrees of culpability when it comes to these things. Somebody attending a loud party versus somebody who threw the loud party, you know, may be treated differently by the courts rather than a one-size-fits-all. So it allows that court to apply some discretion when determining culpability. But then, you know, there are those stiffer penalties that if you, for the habitual offender provisions, that if you offend, if you're found responsible previously three times within 12 months, then now you're looking at a misdemeanor offense of no less than $500, enough to $2,500, and the judge has the capability of imposing jail time if need be. So that's really a summary of, of the changes that we think would be appropriate.
So as far as, like, the times you can play loud music, like, everything staying the same in, in that regard?
The times...
Like how you have to, you know, 10:00 PM or whatever, right?
That, that part is changed because...
Oh, it is changed.
Yeah, so we, we removed the, like, hey, it's not a violation if you're playing your loud music at 9:45, because is there a rough cutoff of, hey, loud music can only be played before then versus you can't do it afterwards? Well, it's, it's a, it depends, it depends on the situation.
How is just a normal person supposed to figure that out then? Like, if you're throwing a party, how do you know when you need to shut the music off or when? Like, I don't get this range thing, like, to me, it's either there's a fine or not a fine, and this is how much the fine is, so I'm a little confused.
No, I understand. And, and you know, this is with, with, you know, enforcement efforts, I mean, there's, with disorderly conduct, you know, seriously disruptive to people, that's really the standard we've put in when, I believe the language is, when you're, you know, unreasonably disturbing the health, safety, welfare of other people.
Which is totally subjective, right? Because one person's irritation might be different than another person's. I, we have, we currently in my district, we have a wedding venue that is constantly getting called on by the neighbors, but every time the police go out, the disco level's not too loud, they're not, you know, but the neighbors are, like, their lives are disrupted. And so we're entering wedding season again here soon as the weather gets cooler, and so I'm going to start getting all those calls again. And I'm wondering if this will have any effect, probably not.
Councilmember Spillsbury, I think it actually will for the officers that are responding because they're going to have to take into effect our consideration several factors, the time of day, the type of noise, is it reasonable for that neighborhood at that particular time? If you're at a business, certainly the noise would probably be higher at 9:00 PM, you know, at a wedding venue, however...
So who defines reasonable, though?
Again, that's the reasonable standard that the officer would use, using these factors, and then if a citation was issued. And, and I want to just say also, our general rule of thumb is education first.
Yeah.
And so we respond, and if there is that discussion, they meet these factors, we expect our officers to contact whoever's responsible for either the venue or the home, to try to get them into compliance, but also educate the community, because there is a little disparity in what some folks feel is, is reasonable or not. And hopefully by utilizing these factors versus just a standard of 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM with 50 feet, this makes it easier for both the citizen to be in compliance and also for the officer and hearing officer if it goes to the citation.
So do we still in neighborhoods have the 10:00 PM quiet time, or not necessarily?
That particular timeframe is taken out of this revision, so there's not a specific timeframe in the, in the revision. That's correct.
I, I appreciate you not wanting to make this a long meeting, but I think we would like more of an explanation as to, you know, so that we can feel comfortable that we've got a reasonable ordinance. So I think we would like to know a little, if either, maybe, I mean, I know this is on, up for Monday, so maybe...
We can pull it.
I'm sorry?
We could pull it and come back with a more detailed explanation. I think we need to get back to what is in place today, I think Councilmember, you hear that first, because if we understand that context and the challenges we have, and then what we're trying to improve. This noise ordinance has gone through many iterations since I've been here, and it's a difficult one. There is going to be, realistically, there will be, someone has to make a decision of reasonableness. It's just going to happen, right? And that police officer's going to have to make that decision. So we're trying to put behind that officer some clarity, some definition, but it's, it is a difficult one to do. So maybe what we could do is pull this item back, we can pull it off the agenda, go back, come back with a more detailed kind of explanation of what it is today and the why we need, what the, I think we need, we're getting kind of lost in the details of the ordinance without understanding kind of where we are today and what the enforcement likes and how we go forward from there.
Yes, I, I agree. I would just like to know, I, I assume it's reasonable, but I'd like to see a description of, here's what, here's where an officer's likely to issue a citation, here's where an officer's likely to say, "Would you please just, you know, turn it from 11:00 down to 8:00, you know, until 10 o'clock?" Or, I mean, I'd like some scenarios so that we know that there's, how we respond to constituent issues. And I'd also like, I mean, the landscaping exception, exemption, rather than dive into it now, I'd like to know how we've changed that, if we have. Councilmember Spillsbury?
I just, I, one of the most important things to me as a council member is to be able to communicate with my constituents, right? Like, communication is key on everything, and so I feel like this is just, if someone asked me about this, I would have no idea what to tell them. I wouldn't be able to say, "You can do this and this until this time, you can..." I mean, I, I just feel like this is so unclear that if I was going to try to communicate that to my constituents when they call and complain or ask questions, we would all be lost.
Or they'd be upset.
And they would be upset, and I, like, I'm just, I'm feeling very not great about this, just because there's no clear communication on this, so that's why I'm having trouble with it.
Mr. Brady, we'll leave it to you, if you want to try to keep it on the agenda for Monday and we just have another presentation?
I, I don't feel comfortable with council's concerns, and so I'd like to come back and have another discussion.
I'd like it pulled, too.
Great, thank you. We'll look forward to talking more about this because it is an important issue.
Sorry, thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, item 2C is a presentation and to provide direction on proposed amendments to the city's fireworks ordinance.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. My name is Sean Alexander, I'm the incoming Fire Marshal. With me... Next, item 2C is a presentation and to provide direction on proposed amendments to the city's fireworks ordinance.
My name is Sean Alexander. I'm the incoming fire marshal. With me today, I have Mr. Baylen from the Police Department and Assistant Chief Wessing. We'll be answering any questions for them. So this presentation today is a, is an update to some ordinance changes that were made at the state level that impact our city code. And what these changes are, basically bring our code into compliance with the new state requirements. Is this-
That's the noise.
Okay, thank you. So we're talking about updating Title VI of the city code on the police side to add some enforcement measures and some fines for fireworks violations. Right now, the, the city of Mesa regulates fireworks sale and use. We prohibit it except for certain days of the year. And changes to the Arizona revised statute here recently changed those dates. We, we have to bring our city into compliance with those. So on May 18th, the governor signed SB 1275, which basically changed, added a couple of hours where use of fireworks were permissible. Normally, they're allowed, I'm sorry, they're prohibited from being used between the hours of 11:00 PM and 8:00 AM. They made changes that on New Year's Day, correction, New Year's Eve, and July 4th, they, they added two extra hours, so fireworks can be used until as late as 1:00 AM. On July 6th, they signed House Bill 2255, which also added the use of fireworks on two days for, to celebrate the Hindu holiday of Diwali. This is a rotating holiday. It generally occurs sometime in October, November, based on the Hindu calendar. But what it did is it adds sale for two days this year. The ordinance won't be in place in time to regulate this year, but moving forward for Diwali, it would allow two days of use, and then two days prior to that would, of additional sales of fireworks. So the changes into the, in the code that, that are being added, they clarify these terms, add the, the Diwali holiday and the times. And then it added some civil, some criminal penalties for illegal use of, and sale of fireworks, to which Mr. Baylen will, will speak to. And it also added some fines for those violations.
So the, so really, in our city code, there was no provision for the illegal fireworks, the ones that you can't have at any point in the year? And so the state legislature does give cities the authority to create penalties for those types of use and possession and sale. So that's what we've added here, is making them misdemeanors to use and possess illegal fireworks, as well as updated the fines for even the civil penalties. To be more, and I think we have a, we have a slide on that later showing the exact fines.
Yes, we do. Any questions about the fireworks or the shows that we're talking about regulating?
So, Mayor, Council, if you call, we came, we talked about this long ago, August, and so we're just, we told you we'd come back now with the fines and, and, but we want to also try to get this in place before New Year's, so.
So projectiles and things like that, that were always banned, we've always had the ability to, if we see that happening, we cite people.
Yes.
And nothing's changed in that regard.
No, sir. And, and PD last year made a really strong enforcement effort to go after those violations.
Yeah, and, and let's, let's comment on that, and I want to commend, well, and it was both fire and police. They, we, I challenged them to step it up, and they really, we put together a specific group, I think we had that presentation. I can't sell, it didn't eliminate, but we certainly took a lot of fireworks off the street, I think, so. Right, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, Council and Mayor, that, that's exactly what the challenge was, is we pulled a large group of officers and detectives and really targeted those that were selling. Because the challenge is, across the city, it's very difficult to get to that location when it's actually happening. So our tactic was to, to target those that were selling the illegal fireworks. And it led us to several individual companies that have multiple venues across the valley, where it led to multiple search warrants, a large seizure of, of illegal fireworks, which hopefully is a deterrent effect for the legitimate businesses that were selling. And we'll be continuing those types of efforts as we move into the, the holidays that typically have large amounts of fireworks.
Thank you. And I know Mr. Freeman has a question, but I'll, I'll just, here was my experience on the Fourth of July, this, just a few months ago. I needed to be downtown to be part of this, the city, anyway, I went home before and after the, the city firework display. And in my neighborhood, and between my neighborhood and the city fireworks display, it was, there were countless, you know, projectile fireworks incidents going on. And I, I just thought, there's, there's no way our fire department has the resources to respond to what's going on right now. So I think this is, this is going to be an interesting enforcement situation, you know, how do we, I, I get cracking down on the retailers, but I know that, just anecdotally, a lot of people, hey, I drove through New Mexico and look at what I could buy in New Mexico, isn't this cool? You know? And I see a lot of heads smiling from people in this room that have had that experience. So this is going to be a, an enforcement challenge. I, I'm not suggesting we not take it on, but I'm just saying, good luck to all.
We have to manage expectations, I think, so.
It's going to have to change the culture a little bit, where for people need to, need to realize that this is not just good fun and I can break the law and it's not that big a deal. We need to train ourselves, here's the types of fireworks that, that are legal, knock yourself out, do them, but you can't cross the line.
Yeah, and I think we're trying to demonstrate, we're getting, we're getting more serious with the increase in the fines. The Police Department, I think we've hesitated in the four, before about, you know, how the enforcement is, but we've recognized that there's, this is creating a huge discomfort for many residents. And so if we, if there's an ability for us to enforce the sell, on the sale of it, but also, we're going to keep promoting that we're going to be out there. And if we see someone, we're not just going to drive by and wave, wave at them, we're going to, we're going to stop and ask questions, so.
And there, there are some clear abuses. I mean, I, I've been lying in bed at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, and there's huge bombs going off in my neighborhood. I mean, I know that, that's, we've got to figure out what to do about that. Mr. Freeman?
Well, so with that said, I appreciate Police Department and their undercover operation with fire, because the takedown was in my district, where a liquor store was, you know, you picked up tons of illegal fireworks there, a warrant was issued over to another person doing social media. I mean, he had a warrant, he had extra firearms in his home that were taken out, and pickup loads of fire, illegal fireworks were taken out. My neighborhoods were definitely affected. I mean, I had numerous phone calls, emails, please, Mark, can you do something? So you have done something, I appreciate that. We need to be proactive with that as, you know, prior to these upcoming firework seasons, if we can, you know, look at social media and the other advertisement medias that they use to get out there and do the enforcement, and take them out and, and take out as many as illegal fireworks as we can. So I appreciate all the effort and the time, because it's, takes resources to do that. But then again, I know the neighborhood that was directly affected appreciated, and I think one of the officers told me, they went to those using the illegal fireworks, the aerial fireworks in the neighborhood, say, hey, where did you get those fireworks? Oh, we got them over here at this place. And that's how they got it, you know, extrapolated the information that allowed the takedown at the liquor store and other places. So with that, I know it's a lot of work and not to belabor it, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything else before the settlement? Proceed with the presentation. Okay, thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you, sir. So this slide just demonstrate, this is, we've seen this before, this just demonstrates the difference between legal and illegal fireworks. Essentially, anything that is aerial is prohibited. So again, this folk, this slide focuses on the changes to the code, specifically outlining the dates and times when consumer fireworks may be used. And those are listed there. Again, normally, they're, they're, for Cinco de Mayo, they can be used for a couple of days, or a day on either side of that. The Fourth of July holiday, New Year's holiday, and then again, we've added use during the second and third day of Diwali.
Councilmember Spilsberry-
So these are Mesas, is this something Mesa's doing, or these days and times, or is this also coming from state?
This is what's allowed by state law. So the state preempts local jurisdictions from prohibiting on certain times, and so we are doing up to what the state legislature has allowed us to.
Okay, on slide two, the overview, I guess I'm confused. The second bullet says that SB 1275 permits municipalities to restrict the use of permissible consumer fireworks between 11:00 and 8:00 each day, except on New Year's and July 4th. So when I read that, it looks like fireworks are permissible every day between 8:00 AM and 11:00 PM. So what am I reading wrong in that? Like, what is, what is that sentence in relation to what we're doing with the days and times?
So that sentence just describes the change added by the Senate bill. The city of Mesa currently prohibits the use of fireworks on, on all days, except for those that are authorized by the state.
But is that saying that they're allowed on every day? Or is that just a bad sentence? I don't know.
It allows that we can restrict-
Between 11:00 PM and 8:00 AM.
Uh huh. So outside, outside of, outside of those hours, this sentence implies that we can't restrict them.
Correct. Yeah, so from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, we cannot.
Any day.
During the, the days that they, there's specific, like the Cinco de Mayo, the July Fourth, and the, oh, Miranda, one minute.
Not every day of the week, just-
Well, I know, I just, so I'm just, the way it's written is-
It's illegal.
I, I, yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Spilsberry, I, why don't we, don't look at that slide, because I agree with you, it's difficult to read. Go to slide six. Because slide six, and, and even bullet points two and three, you should just realize that means New Year's Eve and on those two days, you get to one, to 1:00 AM. That's a long way of saying that, on those two days, you get 1:00 AM. But through those, you know, basically one-week periods, you get to 11:00, except for those two days that you get to go to 1:00.
And you can't do it until 8:00 AM in the morning.
Right.
Right? So, but on those nights, you can go until 1:00, anytime during the day until 1:00. So basically, from 1:00 AM to 8:00 AM, you can't do fireworks.
Right. And then you get to the, I think they'll circle back to the enforcement difficulty, but that is what the state, and that is, that sort of, that language right there just, you know, mimics sort of what the state statute says.
And this is what we've already had, though?
No, so this is new.
This is new.
These are the proposed changes from the state law.
Okay. Thanks, I was just a little confused on that. Oh, we couldn't regulate the time before, and now we can. Okay. Yes, okay.
Thank you. Is there more to your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So I'll transition over to my police friends here, but this is where we start getting into the proposed changes, the fines and charges that can be levied for violations of this new ordinance.
And so, again, increasing the fines to be consistent with other cities on the civil side of violations, and then creating misdemeanor penalties for the use and sale of fireworks to be no less than $1,000 fine and, and up to, which is up that, up to 2,0500 for every misdemeanor.
And so that's, that's, Jeff, remind us what it is today? Because there was, there's always been some complaints about RP's where some of the bullets-
Right now, it's like 75.
The first violation was a fine of $250. A second violation within 12 months was $500. A third violation within 12 months was $1,000. And so, and then each violation after that was a habitual offender, class one misdemeanor. So we've, we've made some changes to make it $500 for each violation. No less than, no less than $500 for the civil violation.
And I think when we look compared to other cities, I think that was always the complaint, that they were comparing us with other cities. I think we're kind of right in the average now, is that fair?
Yes, that's right.
So we didn't go extreme, we didn't, but we're not the lowest end anymore, we're right in the average. So that was the, I think that's what council's looking for us to come forward to now, and I think we've got a, that's what we want to propose, that some of those changes for Mabe.
So those are the fines for using permissible fireworks outside of the prescribed time limits?
Days and times.
Can you remind us, what are the, what are the, what are the fines for using impermissible fireworks?
That would be a class one misdemeanor, and so no less than $1,000 fine, up to $2,500.
All right. So that's a pretty stiff, I mean, I think helping to, if we advertise the, the consequences, $500 if you use the legal stuff when you shouldn't, but $1,000 if you're shooting off projectiles, that, I think, would help.
It's a expensive firework.
But you still have to be caught in the act of it, correct? Which is the hard part.
Councilmember Spilsberry, that's a very good point, and that is a challenge for us, because typically, you may have 30 or 40 of these calls at any given time, let's say on the Fourth of July after those hours. There's no way that we can get to each one of those realistically. So we are looking at some ways to maybe target some, you know, from speaking to some of our council members, we know there's specific areas in their communities that maybe we can utilize, you know, some resources at those given dates and times to hopefully see those. But it's a challenge if we don't have evidence that it occurred, or we didn't see it in person. The second challenge is, the great majority of people who, who call PD don't want contact. And so when we get there, we have nobody to verify that anything occurred. And so that, that's probably the larger challenge for us when we respond to fireworks violations.
But like, to your point before, you'll then provide education to those people and the, and explain the fine and why. And it may be some education about why loud fireworks are a problem for certain groups of our community, right?
Well, we, we, we did that this last go-around, so education was a big component there, it was about 160 people that were contacted, and that was provided. As we move into the, the next holiday, firework season, if you will, we are probably just going to move right into enforcement across the board.
Oh, okay.
Just, I, I think we have to escalate that, because if we do some public, you know, service announcements and some community education, that can serve as the education component for our communities, and then our officers can actually take enforcement action if they have an opportunity, in the case that you described, where it happens in their presence or we have evidence to support it.
I know you've been working very hard to get the word out, but especially with these changes, where you're changing the times, the fines, the types, using neighborhood services, using Nextdoor, whatever, doing a huge campaign, especially as we get towards the new year, a lot of people, even if they're using legal, will not know about the time difference. And I think that's something I'm very excited about, is to know that there is a time that I, we don't have to listen to it over the, you know, we can sleep. So what are, as a council member, certainly be glad to push it out, maybe our PIO office could help with a video or something, really push hard in getting this information out, and hopefully those who are violating it are doing it with the knowledge of what the regulation is.
And Vice Mayor, the, the plan is, at this point, is to work with our PIO counterparts in the Fire Department to put together a PSA, because it combines both of our departments. Not only will we be pushing it out, but also through the city PIO's office to put it out citywide. And then our crime prevention folks will be putting out to all of their community contacts that they have, which is every multi-housing unit and HOAs across the city. So it'll be a, a large broadcast of specifically what you mentioned, with our enhanced enforcement efforts as well as the changes in times.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for this councilman? Mr. Freeman?
Chief Alexander?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations on your fire marshal assignment.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sure every one of us will be contacting you, at one point or the other.
We are certainly available.
I have your cell phone.
So this item is, is on our agenda for Monday to be introduced, and there'll be a hearing on it a month later. Okay. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda for this meeting is 2D, is a presentation and to provide direction on the city's electric vehicle initiatives. Ian?
Good morning.
Good to hear from you. Good to have you here.
Good to be here. All right. Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Ian Linsen, I'm an assistant to the city manager, and I wanted to give you all a brief update on some of our first initiatives that we're undertaking to accelerate EV adoption in Mesa. And we're talking about electric vehicles because we think they can be a really critical component of our climate action plan. So especially when the grid here becomes more renewable, as we're seeing just outside our, our doors, and, you know, supply- our doors, and, you know, supply chains start to get more local, EVs can really help with especially the climate, or, excuse me, the carbon offset components of our climate action plan. But in addition, kind of interesting, so Arizona happens to find, we find ourselves in the top 20% or so states with the highest per capita registered electric vehicles. And that continues to increase year over year, big numbers. I know anecdotally for me, maybe it's just because I think about EV a lot, but I, every time I drive, I see another EV. So, it's another reason, we're just kind of trying to respond to the demand that we're seeing out there in the community. So we're going to take, right now, we're going to take two concurrent paths. We're going to work on what we can really control, which is our internal city fleet electrification. But then, what I want to kind of talk more about, with you about today, is the broader community adoption, which is a bigger undertaking, but can really have a larger impact, especially when we talk about the climate action plan. But real quick, so on, just a quick update on our fleet, very exciting, we are still on track to get the first few Ford F-150 Lightnings that'll be coming to town here in the next couple of months. We are one of the first agencies to receive these vehicles. We're not the very first, but for this particular model, we may actually be, we're still trying to figure that out. But that'll be really exciting, so stay tuned for that. We're also in the middle of work with a consultant who's helping us with a review of all of our city sites across the city, and plan for further fleet electrification, so that we can have the charging infrastructure in place as we decide to continue to electrify the fleet down the road, so that we won't have to, because in, you know, in this case right now, we have a limited amount of charging infrastructure, but we hope that in the future, we'll have the charging ready to go for when those, when those electric vehicles are available. So that is ongoing and should be wrapping up, you know, in a few months or so.
Mr. Freeman?
Which departments are getting the F-150 Lightnings?
You know, that's a good question, there's a few of them.
It's spread out, we didn't want to go to one department, so, because we want to get the experience of having them in different uses. So, I can't remember if Mike's not here, but when we get those, they'll be distributed. I think there's like four or five different departments that are getting them.
That's fine. Remind me the number of units that we're purchasing.
So, I'm going to get it wrong, but somewhere, the first batch was around 25-ish or so. We're getting a couple, you know, in fits and starts, right? Because these are very limited, and they're in high demand.
Mark's, I think Mark's got the number.
Oh, okay.
Ian, sorry, 25, 26, isn't that?
Is that just the first group?
And then a total. And we have another order.
A total of how many?
The first 26 should be coming in, hopefully towards the end of the year here. We have about 76 on order, though.
So we ordered, what was that, three years' worth of fleet replacement or something like that? We, instead of waiting, because we realized that we kind of had to get your order in now if you were going to get them.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, as soon as they open the ordering window for us, we place as many orders as they'll allow us to get in.
Yeah, because Mayor and Council, it's worth noting, I mean, when we talk about community adoption of these vehicles, one of the hurdles right now is actually being able to find a vehicle. And so we're in the same boat, as an organization, we're competing with folks nationally to try to get our hands on these, and we've been lucky that we've been able to get orders in, so.
And our challenge, too, is, as much as we want to get them in sooner, we're still working on the infrastructure to support it, which, what do we say, April timeframe is when we'll have.
The initial batch.
The initial batch of electric charging stations for our fleet. We're going to get some vehicles before then, so we'll be running a lot of extension cords, but, you know, we're, so we're have to, you know, we're ordering the fleet, and at the same time, we're trying to hurry and get the infrastructure in place so we can support it.
But to reiterate, the great news about the consultant that's working with us right now, is that we will now be ahead of the curve when it comes to charging going forward for additional electric vehicles as they come online.
So, to the infrastructure question, I mean, obviously, we need the cables and, you know, the stations, but do you need to upgrade the underlying electric capacity of some of these locations? And is that a little bit easier, because in some of these sites, we're the electric company, or is that?
It's, I mean, yes, our Electric Energy Resources is great to work with, but it's really supply chain issues and challenges of getting the equipment, right? Oh, Tony.
Tony's coming up, but Mayor, you're correct. So that's part of that evaluation, is where do we stand? And in some cases, if we're looking to have to upgrade our service electric panels and everything else, those are very long lead times. So, we're trying to be strategic when we place that first batch of vehicles, of where we thought we had electric capacity, whether it's in the Mesa service area or the SRP service area, where that, those facilities where we can locate and where we knew power sources were available to support those initially. And then, we'll look at expanding if we need to, but yes, we are, there's a very long lead time on the electrical side of things.
But Mark said it, I mean, a large, we have a large portion of our fleet in our electric service area, but we have a lot of, especially with the growth to the east, and we're moving a lot of our fleet that direction, so we will be, we're going to be in the SRP service area also.
And if you really want to geek out about it, I mean, there's different types of charging, so the plugs that you see around here, you know, you might have the infrastructure for, but that takes days potentially to charge a vehicle. If you want to start ramping it up, it takes more power, becomes more difficult if the facilities aren't already in place, to make something like that happen. So that's, you know, that's in part, this consultant has taken a look at that for us. What I'll talk about in just a second, is we're going to have a consultant kind of look at that for the broader community as well.
Can we, we're putting up some solar-covered parking areas, can charging stations run off of that solar that we're generating?
So Mayor and Vice Mayor, that's a really cool idea, and I really love that idea. Right now, it is not as efficient as it might be in the future, but.
Okay. For the solar, there will be electric vehicles charging stations in the new improvements that are going on right now. So we will do it, but it doesn't necessarily have a direct connection.
It's not directly fed, yet.
But we're including those as part of the improvements in the parking lot.
That is an emerging tech, that, kind of like these microgrids and things like that, that are going to be really interesting to keep an eye on going forward.
Yeah, especially these areas where you may not have the capacity, if you're able to install kind of, some kind of solar sourcing.
Some battery.
You might be able to be a substitute.
This is exciting, but I think, you know, there are also, there's the potential that we're going to have an embarrassing situation where we have vehicles and not the capacity to charge them, and so, and I know we're, what's the likelihood of that?
Mayor, I don't think that'll be the case, because as those vehicles come in, there's a number of things we need to do to uplift them and equip them with our computers, depending on where they're going, decals, lighting, and everything else, so the timing will actually work out well. And this also gives our, as we're going through that process of outfitting those vehicles and uplifting them, it gives our fleet service staff an opportunity to test them and work on them. This is new technology for our mechanics and our fleet staff to work with, too, so they need to get in there and work on them, tear them apart.
We're working, we're working pretty diligently to get those stations in, so.
Yeah, so I think the timing will actually line up, as they're rolling out on the street, we'll have that infrastructure in place.
That'd be great.
There may be, at the beginning, it may be a little bit of a challenge, but we'll catch up by early next year.
Great. And I mean, to what extent do we run a fleet 24 hours a day? Is the possibility that we're running some, you know, we'll charge some vehicles during the day that are used in off-hours, or?
I mean, Mayor, that's all being looked at right now, so there are different organizations across the valley that have electric fleets, and they do that. They'll change the times and when they charge and when they use them. For us, it may be just overnight charging, but it, you know.
Yeah, a lot of our vehicles are from 6:00 AM to 3:00, 4:00, they're just, they're being used the whole time.
Other than public safety, I guess.
Yeah, so, and that's why public safety is a challenge, right? Because there, one guy comes in, next person jumps on that vehicle and goes right back out. So, anyway, we're, but there's plenty of our fleet that we can start with this conversion, and, you know, we've kind of like, okay, these, let's go get the low-hanging fruit, let's get the ones we can do, and others will just, you know, we're waiting for the world to kind of catch up with us and the technology, but, so no, we're very thrilled that we have so many coming our way, and that's why we're working very hard to get the infrastructure in place, because you will begin to see it, we have a, and I forgot to bring it, I was going, we have a specific logo on the electric vehicle trucks, so it's going to be very noticeable once we get those.
All right. Well, now, I'll get to, actually, so the community side of things. So what we just talked about is actually the easy part. Kind of the more, the challenging, but the larger opportunity here is in, within the community, the broader community. So, we're going to, we're going to approach this through three kind of initial focus areas. We're taking a look right now at all of our internal processes that we've got when it comes to installing or retrofitting for electric vehicle charging. So whether that, you know, you're at your house, and you're trying to install a 220, or a plug that can charge, or you're an apartment complex, a business, what have you, we want to make that, we want to make Mesa known as the place where it's the easiest to do that sort of work, so that we're not the bottleneck. We don't think we are, but we're taking a look at that right now to ensure that that's the case. If there are things that we find, you know, down the road, we'll be working with Mr. Brady and potentially yourselves as well, to come to you with some recommendations, but, so that's happening right now. The other area is, as I mentioned, another consultant. So we're kind of at the tail end of the RFP process for that right now. We'll be getting somebody on board here, hopefully shortly, that's going to go out to the broader community and say, hey, how are EVs being used today? Where is the charging infrastructure today? And how might that change if, you know, certain variables are adjusted? Is there a role for the city out there, you know, in our parks, libraries, other rights-of-way? Does it make sense for the city to do some public charging? We're going to take a look at that, we're going to do a lot of stakeholder engagement with this consultant, and then we will be coming back to you in many months, unfortunately. It is going to take some time, like I said, this is a bit of a process, but we'll be coming back to you with some recommendations from that. And then, as we always do, we are very focused on our partnerships here. So, we know we're not in a silo by any means, folks drive all over the valley, and so we are, you know, the mayor actually asked MAG, Mayor Copa Association of Governments, to take a look at this issue regionally, so that we're not reinventing the wheel ourselves or being redundant when we don't have to. We're working with SRP very closely, obviously, they're a very crucial stakeholder in this, other businesses, cities, that sort of thing. So, real quick, I'll go through each of those. So the internal process review, take a look at what we're doing already today, whether it's a retrofit, a new build, let's make it easy, as I said, and see if there are some areas for improvement. And again, this, the intent in this is, you or I maybe wants to do this, or a business does, let's make it as easy as possible. The community consultant, I think I went through all of this already, look, I was so efficient. So, we're going to have them talk to a bunch of stakeholders, review the landscape. Also, I did miss this, we did ask them specifically to help prepare us for these federal grant opportunities that are coming forward. There's a ton of money out there. This initial batch you may have seen is starting to go out to the states to do their interstate electrification, which is really exciting, so Arizona's plan got approved, which is great. So that's happening, and then potentially, we'll be coming back with some policy recommendations. And then our partnerships, we'll continue to build on these partnerships. You know, in addition to reducing that redundancy, it does, we think, helps us with the grant competitiveness again, which is very crucial, because we want to get our hands on as much money as we can to help build this out if there is a role for us. So, those are really, like I said, this is kind of the first set of things that we are doing here. There's going to be plenty more to come, but we wanted you to know that there is work happening, and we're kind of at the forefront. Mesa's at the forefront of this in many cases, so it's a pretty exciting field, and, you know, in the next weeks and months to come, you'll have plenty of additional updates on this, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Spilber?
I don't have a question, but just a comment, I think we're all really glad that Ian loves to geek out on stuff like this, and our whole city benefits from all of your special projects you work on and geek out over, so thanks for all your work on this.
Sure.
Amen. Other questions? Ian, I appreciate your saying that we are at the forefront, the city of Phoenix announced a policy on this, you know, they've had staff people working on this for a while, and I, so I was concerned that we weren't at the forefront, but I'm convinced now that we are with the bipartisan infrastructure bill, and the, all the federal funds that are out there that you keep reading about, I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, at the middle or the back of the parade, you know, when the funds run out, and I'm convinced that we're not, so.
Mayor, I'm happy to tell you.
As a city and as a region.
Absolutely, and Mayor, I'm happy to tell you that Phoenix has reached out to us to see what we're doing on this, too, so.
Okay. Great. Thank you, thanks for that update.
Sure thing.
Next item on our agenda is item three, is to acknowledge receipt of board minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Ms. Duff and Mr. Freeman, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next is current events and conferences attended. I know you guys have been busy. We had a great event last night, didn't we? Vice Mayor, talk about that, that was in your district.
No, you can go ahead and talk about it, please.
Well, it was, we've been looking forward for the last two years to last night, when we opened up our cities, our, what are we going to call it? The Plaza at Mesa City Center, thank you. Then, we always thought that this was going to be a good idea, this partnership between ASU and the city, and the, just the energy that was going to bring, the people it was going to attract, the businesses it was going to attract, and so the mixed building, we will be celebrating that in another month, on October the 28th. But last night, we celebrated the opening of the Plaza, which is this amazing park that is going to be, a lot of it is tied to ASU and the Film School and the huge screen that's on the side of this building, and I think going forward, a lot of cities are going to come to Mesa and say, wait a minute, we heard you had a big, high-definition screen in one of your parks, that's, you know, it's a pretty innovative idea, and I think it's going to be, we're going to see cities coming here to see how we did that. But the ASU is going to be a great partner on that Plaza. There's a lot, we have wonderful events at the MAC all the time, Dia de los Muertos and other festivals, that now will, I think, spill over onto this side of Main Street as well, and then those events will be bigger and better and cooler. And then there's a lot of events that are just going to be specifically made possible because of this Plaza, you know, the Mary Main Street and other events like that. So, I think going forward, for generations, this, people in Mesa are going to appreciate that we have this facility. For anybody who's watching this who missed the event last night, come to Mary Main Street, come to an event at nighttime, and have this experience of having that big screen, and then this well-lit and beautiful Plaza in the middle of a very authentic and historic downtown is really a great amenity. So, thank you to Mr. Brady and everyone at the, on the city staff that worked so hard to make this better than I expected it would be. Vice Mayor, what do you want to add to that?
I was equally excited about that, and there's so many ways that we can use this park, as well as just hanging out there, but last night, we used it as a, we had a roller derby group there to do an exhibition, but other people brought their skates, and there is a large concrete pad area where you can just skate around. Of course, in Mary Main Street, that becomes ice, and it'll be ice skating, and there is a water feature that will, you know, that, just coming out of the ground for the kids to play in when it's warm. That is not active right now, but it will be. So there's a lot of things to, ways to enjoy it beyond the events that we'll have. And at Mary Main Street, I believe we're going to use that big screen, maybe for the first time, in showing holiday movies at the same time, so that'll be exciting. Last week, I did miss a study session, I was at the National League of Cities Large Cities Council, a convening of 20 vice mayors or council presidents from across the nation, and we spent several days looking at rail transit, downtown development, housing programs for those experiencing homelessness, approaches to affordable housing, and just talking about the things, as large cities, cities over 400,000, what problems, the recurring things that they've tried, what has worked, what hasn't worked, it was, is very beneficial in sharing that information. On Monday, I also had a National League of Cities, but it was a Zoom call, right here for the Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Committee, in which we're putting on the finishing touches on our proposed changes to the national municipal policy and our, and our resolutions, and that's about it, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Spilber?
Last Thursday night, I attended a night at the Phoenix Art Museum, put on by the ASU Teachers College, and that was just neat to be there with Mesa Public Schools and seeing some of the programs they're doing to help attract and retain teachers, and I love that community partnership there. I also attended the Coalition on Human Dignity and Religious Freedom at the ASU School of Law, and our mayor led a panel, and all on our Mesa Non-Discrimination Ordinance, and that was really neat to bring people together to talk about that important topic. And then I also just wanted to thank our staff for the two text amendment, the drive-through text amendment meetings that you've had, virtual and public, so that our development community and others in our community could have their input and their voice be heard, so I just wanted to thank you for that. Those were both very well-attended, and I appreciate you doing that.
Mr. Riddick, you and I went to an event at AT&amp;T, do you want to talk about that?
Oh, yeah. Mayor and I, the AT&amp;T started. Mayor and I, the AT&amp;T started, so we broke the ground on their first permit to underground, underground fiber for, for their work that they're going to start doing here in Mesa, so that was exciting. So, hopefully, they said they're going to work around the neighborhood, around the AT&amp;T facility first, and then move forward as they get permits through the city. So, we will have fiber pretty soon from AT&amp;T, and they're moving fast, so what they mentioned. So, and then, the other note, any baseball fans, Sloan Park this weekend, Mexican Baseball League, several Mexican baseball teams are here Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at Sloan Park, evening times. It's a definitely different environment from your regular baseball game, so they have